This conference will now be recorded.
Mayor Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gandy?
Here.
Mr. Ball?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
And Commissioner Trujillo is not present today.
Mr. Ball? Please bow your heads and pray with me. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all of us who are together. Thank you, dear Lord, for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Give us your guidance that we may be good stewards to excel in our work and help us work together and encourage each other. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I would like to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, individual against the law. I salute the flag of New Mexico, the T N C law.
May we see? Open the floor for our most on the issue.
Just to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
The second to equip the agenda as submitted or any discussion or corrections.
Just had a question why we changed our typical non-action items. They just in a different arrangement.
Same question, so I'll answer the answer either or. It was basically so that anyone that was present didn't want to stay for the budget part.
No, no, I figured that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure. But then I have no problems.
No discussion.
Madam Secretary, a roll call vote please.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. All right. A motion on consideration events. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of regular minutes, the 25th, 2022, work session minutes, the May 2nd, 2022. Second. Motion in second for the approval of these minutes, any discussion or corrections? Having none, roll call votes please.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. All right. Staff reports, Madam Secretary, anything?
Mayor Commissioners, I have a report on the damage to the city property and having as a result of the hailstorm. We have adjusters that should probably be coming this week. We've got 18 vehicles that will be covered. And they're, we had more than that, but bigger than that. We have 2014 and we're, we'll be covering them in insurance. And so we're gonna gather all the vehicles in the parking lot out here and get those checked out by the adjuster. Hopefully this week. That leads to all the influx of roofers that have come down. And we can get code enforcement now to make sure that they have credentials and their state contractors license. Jay Lee has posted those statements on the website.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. Oh, yes, yes. You made mention of vehicles, what about any property of the city?
Yeah, we had some hail damage, mainly just like buildings that had skylights and that sort of thing. What people blow out.
They're gonna be coming.
Yes, it'll be a different adjuster and manager coming in.
Did have to comment, I noticed that on the city property on 9th and, excuse me, Avenue D and 7th and 7th and C on the City Park, but there were a couple of people advertising on the city property. So they had signs out for roofing and different things like that.
I haven't noticed that. Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to get the contract.
I noticed it Sunday, I didn't notice it today, but I noticed it Sunday. I went a different way from going to church, so I didn't notice it then. So.
Any further questions? Mr. Gandy?
City Manager has invited Ed Piero to come speak to the group, he's gonna get kind of an update on our audit process. He's been working with our auditor, he's out of Columbus, and he's been, he was here last week, he's here again this week. So I just wanted to invite him to give a little update.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Ed Piero, I'm the CPA. Been a CPA for probably over 40 years, I lost track. Done a lot of work in governmental accounting, audits and also accounting. Last, last November, so the, the city auditor, Deanne Willoughby, out in Columbus, reached out to me and asked if I'd be interested in helping the city with some accounting issues. They had lost the finance director and the individuals working on the, in the lead team. And they had quite a bit of change in the staff in the accounting department and they were, they weren't ready for an audit. And so I visited at that time with Mayor David Trujillo. And so we entered into a small purchase agreement with the city to assist them with their accounting issues. The accounting, two full problems with the accounting. One of them is that as of June 30, 21, which is the year the auditor is trying to audit, they, they were not, the city is not ready at that point, was not ready for audit. The, in the prior year's audit report on 6/30/20, the auditor had maybe 16 audit findings in there. One of the, one of the more concerning audit findings was, it was like three different cash balances. There was a cash balance in the books, there was a cash balance what she felt perhaps was the number, and then there was another cash balance out there. So, so as, as an auditor, that's, that threw up some big red flags to me because you, you have to know your cash balances before you can move forward and do your accounting. The city, the municipality reports on a cash basis. So when they report to DFA, they have to show beginning cash balances. Activity for the quarter, which means revenue increases and, and revenue decreases expenditures. And then, and then the cash balance. The, besides the problems with, with the accounting records, the municipality is also delinquent in submitting their reports to DFA, to the New Mexico Department of Finance Authority. Recently, I received an email from the, from the New Mexico Department of Finance Authority and they're wondering what the status is. And the city has, has entered into agreement with them to try to help them get caught up with the finance, with the finance quarterly financial report. Where we stand as far as our agreement, we're taking a two-pronged approach. We're trying to get the city information to the auditors so that they can audit the June 30, 21 balances. And then we're trying to help the city get current on this year's recording of activity, reconciling bank accounts and the like within 6/30/22. The ultimate goal is to get the audit caught up. We're having a meeting this week with the auditor and city representatives to discuss the items that we have prepared to send them, and we're in the process of sending them to them. And then we continue to work on getting the banks reconciled and caught up as for, for the current fiscal year. The idea is to try by the end of May to be all caught up with the bank reconciliations through, through April. And if that can occur, then early June when they do the bank reconciliation, they will be caught up current. And then it's a matter of just doing adjusting entries and getting prepared for the audit for 6/30/22. That's where we're at. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you, would you also discuss, because I was in the exit meeting with you on Friday, discuss that the Department of Finance is withholding the city, some of the city's money because of the budget, not, I mean, excuse me, not having the audit in their position yet. Then any of the two majors, which is a budgetary, are a audit situation when we are delinquent.
Right. The, when Governor Martinez was in office, she signed an executive order that basically said that if any counties, state and local, or local governments, if any counties, municipalities did not have a current audit in, that, that the Department of Finance Administration would withhold funds until they got their audits in. There was a time in the recent past where local governments were having trouble getting their audits in for various reasons. And they said enough's enough, you gotta have your audit in to, to receive your funding. And so part of my conversation recently with DFA has said that, you know, they're delinquent. We're not releasing funding, there's some funding out there for them. So they need to get that. So as I explained to the city mayor and also the city manager, that it's important that the audit gets done, it's a high priority issue, that it gets done as quickly as possible. And so that will be a discussion to be held this week with the auditors. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Well, we appreciate, I told you on Friday, we appreciate you bringing your crew in last week and at least giving us the position where hopefully the auditor can proceed and in a timely manner as she, as she's able to get us in, hopefully by the end of this history, that be upheld. We do appreciate you. Okay. Thank you. I'm just kidding, you guys more? No?
No.
That's it? All right. Take your time.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and City Manager, this will be very brief. The tradition of a police department chaplain goes back over 100 years. They serve police and the public and have responsibilities that include healing officers' deal, helping officers deal with stress, burnout, trauma and domestic issues, assisting in death notifications and officer-involved shootings, prime victim support, interactions with the homeless and substance-dependent persons and community relations. They offer themselves to be on call as needed and are not compensated for their services. As far as we know, the Lovington Police Department has never had a chaplain in its history. Two people answered the call to become chaplains of the Lovington Police Department some months ago. Pastor Robert Gastman of United Methodist Church here in Lovington is a 21-year-old Army veteran and a retired law enforcement officer. Also Commissioner Paul Campos, retired law enforcement and who also served as deacon for St. Hellemus Church in Hobbs. And both expressed a strong desire to serve our department. So on behalf of the Lovington Police Department, I would like to present these chaplain badges to Robert Gastman and to Patricia Rodriguez Campos of the family of the late Paul Campos. It is often said of police work that your worst day is our every day. The department wishes to thank you for selflessly serving our department, offering your spiritual guidance and comfort in our times of need so that we may continue to function to effectively serve the public. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. On behalf of the City of Lovington, we'd like to express our appreciation, not only of past service, but for your willingness to step up and be of service at this point. And of course, we certainly want to give your, give our condolences for the loss of not only a classmate, but a friend over many years. And we know that he's, he's not only missed here, he's also missed especially at your home. We just want you to know that we appreciate the service that he had in the commission and the closing of services. Thank you so much. Thank you for it.
Thank you.
All right, Aaron Chief, Mayor, Members of the Commission. So I've got a few numbers for you. For last month, we had a total of 189 EMS calls. We had 45 entry facility transfers, 11 airport transfers, refusals, cancels, DOAs. We have 46, six table calls and 39 fire calls. Pretty busy.
Mr. Ball? Again, Mr. Ball, please shout vocal. I was told last time that I need to correct myself also. Shout vocal, make sure you go to our restaurants and eat. I just wanted to put that out there to make sure I was corrected. Every hour spent in the City of Lovington is for everybody. Mr. Gandy?
Hey, I do have one concern, actually a local historian or whatever. It's a minute thing, in my opinion, but he finds it very important. So the M Street, McAllister, McAllister, which is misspelled. So I mean, it's a sign, I thought I would bring it up, but yeah, it is misspelled.
It's McAllister?
McAl. I didn't bring my phone with me.
Oh, it's okay, no, I'm, I can remember that street.
It's the little diagonal street down there, Baja, that cuts across back over to Riner Lecter's last Avenue R, right there. Yeah, that locks us in the little triangle right there. So yeah, that little street right there, that's been misplaced. That was donated back before dirt was invented and stuff like that. So, but he would like that corrected at some time when we have a chance. So. That's all I have.
Daniel?
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing tonight.
Any more?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, as you look at the agenda on the non-action items, tonight we will have budget presentations by Police Department, Fire EMS Department, Onion Zone and Legislative, which would be Shannon's Department. Tomorrow morning, we will meet with all the department heads and continue budget hearings. That will be tomorrow morning. Tomorrow afternoon, myself and Ms. Kennedy, we will start our budget analysis and we will have a report ready for the commission at our May 16, 5 p.m. budget. At this time, may I stand for any questions that the Mayor and the Commission have? Thank you.
I might have one question, and this is also in addition to Ms. Kennedy's. May the 15th, we need to get with the DFA, the auditor. I'm assuming we're on the one-third year of our current auditor, but just wanted to remind them of that deadline. I know it's, we've had to take a couple of weeks.
That's correct, the May 15th. Yes.
Mayor Commissioners, okay, so Main Street, moving along. If anybody knows, we have the guys here today. We have a water line. That is one of the reasons we're adding so many valves to this project is because we could not shut that off.
Right.
They just, kudos to the water department, they went swimming and then dived in there. So, but the, they did get the 16-inch tap done on commercial and that went well, so not having any issues there. We are hitting a lot of rock X, which is when you hit solid cleechy. It takes more to excavate that. So they are just keeping accumulative, we are at 544.3 cubic yards of rock X. That will be a changeover at the end that we will be given because that rock X was not in the original bid documents to hit all that. 2,400 linear foot of water line is done, we like 1,700 feet to go. The magistrate, of course, everyone knows the slab is in, steel's coming. The, the erection of the steel is scheduled to start on the 20th of March. Jackson Avenue is done for construction, all we need is the painter to not be sick so he can paint those crosswalks that are there and then Jackson is completely done. Like Shannon said, we are dealing with a great influx of roofing contractors and I am trying to verify that they all are state contractors, they're certified with the state, they pull their state permits. I'm working closely with the state inspector to verify everything and we're trying to keep close tabs. So just let the public know, if, if you got a roofing company coming to you, make sure they get their proper permits, that way we can verify they're real contractors and you don't get scared. That's all I have, if you have any.
I'm attentive to yours, I were gonna do it in a moment, but let's go ahead. This is in addition to what Ms. Ball was talking about. Normally, I would also join in with Commissioner Ball that try to use local people, okay? What I want to bring to everyone's attention is, starting last Monday, I was on roofs pretty much the first three days. And we, if you, especially if you're in the north, oh, excuse me, southwest corner of town and of course it extended a lot further than that, not only did you have damage, a lot of your singles were penetrated, they were broken, I don't care if they're asphalt or fiberglass or there's various types. But if we, for the one time in my life, I'm hoping it doesn't rain, we're supposed to have rain on Wednesday, but we're gonna have a lot of leaks because of that. And I have several roofs that were affected, so having been on those, I understand that it's gonna happen. So I appreciate planning and going, taking the lead, we're trying to get people qualified. I really request that you ask for all of their credentials before you sign any contract or anything. Please have them checked out, make sure they have everything, have good discussions, interview two or three, get as much knowledge as you can because we don't want to stop them while your roof is exposed. So especially in a time of rain. So this is, this is a time, unfortunately, we are scheduled, it's only 40% chance, but it, because of that, we want to get a lot of roofs done in a very short time. And that's, you know, hopefully helps the community, but we have no, all of the roofers in our area combined cannot do this in a less than three to six months, and that would be if they worked literally every day. So we're, we're welcoming out-of-state, out-of-town contractors. We're making them toe the line and make sure they follow through the business. So that's just my word of caution. And I, again, if you have any questions, please get in touch with City Hall and they can, they can help you out. I'll also be talking on that subject in the morning, I guess on the radio. Anyway, it's just to let everybody know. All right, thank you for that, anything for you on that?
And code enforcement is, is out looking for those permits issued from us and the state. And if it's not there, you will be shut down.
You will be shut down. So it could be detrimental to the homeowner or the business, not limited. So just understand, if there's people on a roof, she's gonna be checked out. So that's, that's important to know. Yes, sir?
So correct me if I'm wrong, but if a citizen had to use an out-of-town local, out-of-town roofer due to the change in the tax structure, Lovington still benefits because they should be charging Lovington City tax on that roof as long as you're inside the city limits there. So if you need your fix roof fixed and you can't get somebody local, you know, and you search out, we still benefit from that anyway, but make sure they're charging you Lovington City tax and not something else.
Absolutely. And that's what part of our permitting is designed to do, assure that they have a city license, a city permit, which we're working with the state also, that they're allowed to proceed as long as they have a life or a state permit and as long as Ms. Ball has issued them a city permit, then they can proceed and do work. And then they'll finalize it because the state is many days, weeks behind. So the good news is, and that's also why we have opened it up, we're striving to open it up, is the city should, that should benefit from GRT. This is probably one of the few instances that House Bill 6 has been in our favor. Yes. And it's, it's considerable to the city. And that's the reason we're desperately trying to stop blah, blah, and I, and it's not their work or anything else, it's just trying to keep them at the playing field level for everyone. Hopefully prices and everything will be pretty much across the board. Anyway, yes, sir, thank you. Anything for?
Yep, that's all I have.
Back to you. Back to you, question? Sure. Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything new, I'd be happy to stand for questions if you have any. Have enough of them. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, we will move on. Now, public comment. If anyone would like to come and speak, please approach the podium, please give your name and we try to limit you to three minutes. We will assist you in that.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners, my name is Mary James. I am the president of our committee for our senior dance. And we have concerns with the resolution that's gonna be talked about a little bit later. Our previous mayor had set us up where we could have our dances at the youth center and not have to pay the exorbitant fee to us because we don't get anything. We have, the band gets 75% of whatever we bring in, 25% of what we get goes towards our supplies for our feed, water and such that we furnish and silverware and et cetera, potluck dinners. So there is no money for us to be able to pay any kind of rental, whether it's the youth center or anywhere else. So I guess my question is if this resolution passes. So I guess my question is, if this resolution passes, do you all know of any other place where we might be able to hold our dances? Because this is a service to our seniors in the community, and not just seniors. We have younger people coming also. And we have sometimes, it's averaging around 44 right now. We had in the past have as many as 50. And I think it was 56 actually before COVID hit when we were doing at the museum. And that was quite tight over there, not many people to see them and have room to dance also. Do y'all have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions. This will be a big discussion item here in just a little while. And this will be the second time that this proposal has come before us. So we'll have some more discussion. And everything that you stated, we are aware of. We're trying to come up, my, I'm just going to say, my personal, to come up with a solution for all of it. It's difficult, and I ask patience in that. To understand that we're not trying to single out any entity to call them a part of.
We just, also, we hope that the proposal is up for tonight. The way it's written and everything doesn't matter. That's our opinion. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
Mayor Commissioners, City Manager and others. My name's Lola Jackson. And before I, to be my complaint, I'd like to preface that, letting y'all know that I am not anti-fun. Certainly not anti-adult beverage, and I'm not anti-partying in the park. But what I am is anti-arriving at the park first thing Sunday morning, and it's covered with beer bottles, beer cans, trash. It was a disgrace. I come to the park every Sunday morning. Because I walk that park two miles every Sunday morning in my jeans clothes. That particular Sunday morning was Mother's Day. And I took with me that day my niece and my niece's niece. So three generations of us arrived at that park, and it was a filthy mess. I love it when we have events. I know that our city needs that, those economic boosts. However, it seems like every time that we do have parks being like that, everything's marvelous until it turns time for cleanup. The bottles in the park really disturb me because we all know how kids are with glass. They're going to break things. Kids love to break glass, which creates a dangerous situation. And I just think as a community, we can do better. And I think that we need to find ways to do better. I attend events all over the country where people get up from those events, pick up their trash and take it with them. I think that if we can't get our people to do that, our community to do that, then perhaps we shouldn't have events like that. Thank you. Are there any questions?
What time in the morning were you there? Just out of curiosity.
It was about, I'm sorry. Our Facebook post was 7:30. Yes, about 7:30. You know, the hotter it gets, the earlier I will be there on Sunday morning.
No, 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 fair enough. I know some people that walk at like 3 o'clock in the morning there. So yeah, I just, I was just curious. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, actually, just as a public citizen, I actually wanted to thank Evelyn for the wonderful office on Saturday. The event was actually a lot of fun to go out to, at the city of Mexican descent. It was also for people to be able to experience that way in a community. It was absolutely great fun, and I know how hard those events are, and I understand how little volunteers we always have for those things. So I, just again, really thankful for EDC being able to provide that for the community.
Evelyn with the Lovington EDC. I wanted to give you guys an update on the event that I posted on Saturday. If you can see pictures, that's the outcome of the event. I mean, there was tons and tons of people. I also want to thank the city of Lovington for providing the police staff. We have the Lee County Sheriff's Officer. Jason with the parks and rec, like above and beyond. I mean, he went above and beyond, the same thing with Bernie. They did great out there. Due to the amount of people that were out there, it was virtually impossible to bait the trash. Yeah. So they picked up, they filled up two full trash trailers, 20-foot trash trailers, full of trash. They were constantly, I never saw them ever take a break. They were constantly checking the bathrooms. This is the first year ever that the bathrooms were not clogged up. They were constantly changing trashes, changing the, there was 15, 16 big barrels of trash cans around the event everywhere. Everywhere I went, I saw something on the ground, I picked it up. I left the event at 4:00 a.m. That's the time I was there. It was literally a 22-hour day for myself. At 4:00 a.m., I've been battered, I was sick all week long, but I still managed to take care of this event. I went home at 4:00. I was back in the park at 8:45, me and my husband only, and we picked up seven additional bags. The persons, the people that took care of the sound and the stage, they left at 6:00 a.m. So the park was unattended for probably about two hours. But in my reservation that I made for the park, I reserved it for two days for the same reason. So it's usually Saturday and Sunday for the stuff that I am not able to pick up. At 4:00 a.m., it's hard, it's pitch black. All the light towers are gone, everyone's picked up their stuff. And I'm not going to walk the 65-acre park by myself. I'm just not going to do it. So we did the best that we could. We had no issues out there. Police department kept everyone safe due to the amount of people that were there. The Lovington Inn did a great job. We got our permits for, in order for that. Any questions for me regarding that day?
I have some questions.
Sure.
Where did you get your information about the park being 65 acres?
The park is 65.
Eight, quote, something acres.
Well, that's like eight acres.
Oh, yeah, it's 600, 600.
It's, they can see five acres at the park? You rented the 65-acre park?
I reserved the whole park.
Yes. And can I ask how, how that works? I mean, I didn't find any type of rental agreement or forum online about, you know, how you rent the park for two days? And what applies to that? Can anybody tell me that?
May I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So we have a rental agreement. It is online. It's under, uh.
I have the one. Yeah, I know the one for the, you know, for the live. And barbecue areas.
Yes.
So she, she rented all of the barbecue areas.
Yes. So for this event, we do allow her to rent the whole park. That way she can put on this event because per an agreement with the EDC, she is supposed to put on this event yearly. And so we allow her to put it at our park if she submits a reservation for it.
So for other individuals who might have a big to-do in the park, they're expected to clean their mess up before they leave?
Everybody is, yes.
Okay, but she didn't.
I reserved it.
She reserved it.
I reserved it Saturday and Sunday. And I cleaned it by 4:11 p.m. It was clean. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I think we can do better than that. It's good news. We tried. I mean, like I'd like, even Laura said, for volunteers, I had no volunteers. I literally had my own family, which was five family members, help me clean up out there. And five city staff that were working from 8:00 a.m. all the way up to 1:30 p.m. when they left my home.
Generally, most events that I've attended like this in other areas, they have a crew out there working nonstop the entire event.
Their crew.
The state's working nonstop. So the four people that the city provided?
Five people.
The five people the city provided, is the city responsible for the cleanup? Because five people are, according to you, you had 9,000 people at your event? Which is great. I mean, I, I, don't get me wrong. You've started a great event until it's time for cleanup, every time.
I have a suggestion. Next time, we'll just close the park this Sunday afternoon.
Well, it's supposed to be closed. The gates were closed.
Right.
I mean, so, I mean, like I said, I did reserve it for two days. Both gates were closed in the front. I mean, and like I said, I literally got four hours of sleep and woke up first thing in the morning. Me and my husband went to go pick it up, and we were there for four hours of sleep. I mean, I did the best I could.
Okay.
So how do we close the park and keep people from?
Okay. Let's start, yeah, let's start right here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I will work with Evelyn next year so that the city can, we can do a better job in making sure that the park is clean. So I will make sure that we have additional personnel, and we will, the issue will be addressed.
So when.
That's, that's all we need.
When this event happens, so only the people attending this event are allowed at the public park? I'm confused.
It's a free event in the community.
I understand.
Anybody's welcome, but not.
But not on Sunday.
Anybody can come, it's just that, I mean, if you're there for the event, the event on Saturday, we reserved the following day to be able to clean so persons like yourself don't see what you saw on Sunday.
So to ease the issue, since you did reserve the park, and due to the fact that she went to the walk area. I mean, basically, she entered somewhere that was reserved without notification. I mean, so we could fence that area off at the cost of the city, or we could just be patient with the staffing we have and be understanding. Yes, we did have a huge mess. I get that. We had 9,000 people. You do realize that's three-fourths of the population of the entire community at this one facility. And you have five people cleaning trash for 65 acres. So I think they did a phenomenal job, and next year we'll do better. And if that's not enough, we will argue this at another time. Your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I give one of our judges for the assault. We did have 12 participants this year. It's always been about three or four, and this year we had 12. I mean, due to high rent, but we never had, I mean, it's the best. It gets better and better.
It gets better over year, and there is room for improvement.
Absolutely.
And this is the first time, and I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson, this is the first time in three years we've had it. It was a phenomenon. I'm going to kick off, and the city manager and the city will endeavor to help with some of these issues.
And you didn't know what was coming. You had tons of trash.
We prepared.
They were overwhelming.
Jason and his crew were excellent. They were working nonstop. Bernie is the same way. They never stopped, never stopped. He answered my calls every time I needed him. There was an issue, he was there. They were always picking up trash, always. And when we left, it wasn't even, we picked up the big stuff. There was little plate that was thrown here. The winds were crazy. When we would pick up the trash, we'd have to chase it because it was flying away. But it was, if you would have been to ride up and it was over there, you'd probably have a stroke in the heart. But we cleaned up until 4:00 a.m.
How do you see where the trash is? If it's a person or a person or a.
Yeah. And I mean, I think they did an excellent job. They did an excellent job.
I feel like the event was a success.
Absolutely.
And I could say, we will, we will push this, and I just want to assure everyone that we're going to get there in every aspect.
So may I encourage a round of applause for the workers and people? They're not here, but I think that's.
All right. Any other public comments? Seeing that, we will move on. Okay, we, now we're going to action items open before for motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022, statute 54, approval of the amendments to the youth center rental policy.
Awesome.
Okay, we have motion and second for consideration of this resolution. Any further discussions? Ms. Stark, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm just here if y'all have any questions about how we rewrote the proposal or suggestions, reasoning why we needed to rewrite the proposal. It's no longer, it's just everybody's safety.
Yeah, sure.
Nonprofit and. Right. Charge, lap, everyone paid.
There, I've had a lot of discussion this past week.
I have too.
I know you have. And of course, as I stated earlier, you know, we examined this unfortunate, fortunately, it was your birthday. Unfortunately, you weren't here, so we didn't, we didn't have you here to talk.
Next year, I'll make sure the calendar is aligned. My birthday doesn't disappear. I don't know.
Okay. My statement then was, we are not, we should not discourage, we should encourage youth in senior activities.
Right.
Okay. After discussion, we don't have a solution for the senior dance, which neither met nonprofit. Or it was basically, it was considered nonprofit because they're not there to make money. We also talked about youth, the school of youth groups and everything else. And it was hopefully my direction. I just said, put something on paper for us to discuss and consider. I don't feel that we have addressed all of these issues. I do feel that there are some concerns with everyone that uses the facility. There's, as much as we want to help the senior dance, also please consider there's a burden on the city also at that time. It's not, you know, it's not overcomeable, but it also, all of these, whether it's the Lovington School prom that takes it for a week in order to prepare for prom or whatever, we're going to have to come up with some solutions for all of these problems. So it's before the commission to either adopt it as it states, and then we amend it or whatever, or come up with a policy with housing amendment, or we disprove it again. So do you have anything? Is there any further questions from the commission?
I would be okay with that. Did we add cannabis to our list of no?
I, so there was also a miscommunication between me and Julie. I submitted a different one, and it wasn't quite what y'all received. And in that one I did, it does state that there is absolutely no drug, alcohol, or, so I'm not sure if that was one of the ones that got left alone or. It should be in the facility rules.
Facility rules, number 10.
Yeah, alcohol, beverage, drugs, smoking, cooking, language, gambling, weapons, and any other thought that these are committed.
So the youth center has a board, right?
No.
So since we don't have a board, can we, maybe? Can we leave an option open for our city manager to distinguish whether or not that, that room, such as the senior citizens or the senior prom, would have the ability to move that in that deal and leave that decision up to him? And if he saw fit with the organization and would start, start scheduling and different things, if that could work out, that would be great. Other than that, it's as is.
Is that a, is that an option? City manager?
Yes, yes.
City manager, would that be something, hey, before, or I'm sorry, before we got, we've got all kinds of questions here. I knew it was going to be a discussion item. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think we need some clear guidance from the council because what, what happens then is that every time the city manager makes a decision one way or the other. And I'm not saying he's not going to make good decisions. It's just that it leaves us wide open.
And he's not always going to be city manager to remember this talk either.
Well, that, but the question is.
Well, that, but the question is if, if one group, excuse me, gets it for free and one doesn't, there's always gonna be an issue. Always, always, always. Whether there really should be or not. So I would say we need to come up with some rules that everyone can look at, read and follow as opposed to putting the burden on the city manager. So that's not.
I think there was some other stuff in there where that was left up to him in the past.
And maybe the thing to do unless we were pressed for time on certain issues or there are problems with our current rules is to sit down, take a closer look at it, see what's, what's really fair. And maybe, and maybe Star has already done this, is to present to you, when we have, you know, certain groups at rent, there is more work involved. And so it can be tied directly to that workload as opposed, you know, the burden it places on employees as opposed to maybe, you know, whether it's a profit, nonprofit. But there's gotta be some rules, I think, that we all can read, look at and make a decision on those rules.
Nonprofit class, but everyone should do a deposit because it's, and maybe just they can enable their contract with that. But so say you bring in prom and make them pay their two fifty deposit, so they go clean.
The two fifty deposit, just in this calendar year, has not been a good enough reason to make them clean. They would rather lose the two fifty and they need it.
This way more.
And it costs me hours to go clean.
Okay, I think we should just proceed and we'll vote on the consideration of it. Then depending on the outcome of that, then that will dictate the next step. The other discussion, anything further?
So we, we're voting on this as is?
Yes.
Or could we? I'm sorry, well, as is, but just a suggestion for later on, could we put in there something unless on the rules like, like another, unless a nonprofit contract is negotiated or something like that?
My question to you, since you're gonna be here. I hate to, I hate to say this, but how would you like to proceed?
I would like to proceed. I would like, I, I'll be the bad guy. I wanna charge everyone. I hate that that makes it towards some groups can't use it. I am sorry, but it's a city facility. It's wearing on our cost. It's wearing on our facility. And the way it was set up, when this person can use it, this person has to pay. I don't think that that's fair. I've been approached by other groups that wanna use it for free because they're not necessarily for profit. But, you know, where's the line? I wanna make sure we have a line and since that's hard to come across, I'd rather just put it, that's it, everyone pays. I would like to put it into groups with like a priority. A group being the kids, a group being nonprofit and a group being residential and for-profit. Being a for-profit group, reserve it next Friday. Well, then a kids group wants to use it next Friday. They have priority so long as they give me a week notice to let the other group know I need to reschedule you. But that would be the only point of even knowing if it's a nonprofit, knowing if it's a kid group or anything, is just giving the building priority.
What if this mama that reserved it and printed all these invitations and you get a week notice to go, never mind? You know, that's not fair either.
It's, there's no hundred percent fair way to do this. I, I'm just excited. I'll be the bad guy about it. We have to just, we have to have a line of everyone who pays, in my opinion.
You throw that one. Any further discussion? It's, it's, you're not being the bad guy. We're just trying to come up with a solution and it's.
I know. It's hard.
All right, so.
I have a question for Peter. Just ask him to get up there. Did Ricky McKibben give the scene, is that person he built, senior citizen was wrote the teachers, Barry McKibben? So why should give your question a pay? Because these ones.
Well, this is.
You, you can have a dance anytime in the dining room of your senior center. They're asking us about the youth.
Oh, excuse me, I told you I should have cut the.
You're a good answer. You're a person.
They say we're running her to the floor.
I understand. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move forward. There's a lot to this and, but we're, we can debate this all night. We've already debated it for two meetings, so let's move forward. Based on the outcome, we'll, we will vote from there. Jen, if you would, you do a roll call vote.
Mr. Go. Mr. Gaines.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
No.
Mayor Roberts.
Thanks.
I just don't think we have information.
I, I, I hate to stall things, but I think this is one that won't. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh fifty-five. Approval of temporary street closure slash block party permit smoking on the plaza June sixteenth through June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion and second for this resolution. I know you're fixing to have some discussion. Any questions before we proceed?
Is this where the road construction is being done?
So no, Mayor Commissioners, we're really excited to be hosting the eleventh annual smoking on the plaza. I've been getting tons and tons of calls. The contestants are already trying to sign up and get ready to go. Everything is live on our website, so vendors, contestants can all sign up online. We have a completely different schedule this year. We are trying again to accommodate everybody. And so what we are doing this year is instead of closing off the street at seven AM on Friday morning, we are requesting that it be closed at four forty-five PM. That is as close as we can get it to the end of the day so that it doesn't interfere so much with our local businesses. We're really, really hoping that this works out better.
Best four forty-five Friday evening.
Yes, yes. So instead of shutting down Friday all day morning, it'll just be that evening. And most of downtown businesses are, most of, everybody's gone by about four on Friday. So we're, we're hoping that that helps give everybody time to get out and it doesn't interfere that much. As you can see, Main Street will not be closed. We will be closing partial, I don't know, B, partial Central, partial Washington, partial Left Street. We did have an official, like before meeting with Chief of Police, Fire Department, County and as well as Street Department and Mr. Martinez. So we did, we had a different map and we changed it to accommodate a little bit better. And so now everyone said yes. So this was the map that everyone could agree on. And we're, we're just really excited. We're gonna be having Friday night, a free skating week for kids. So that'll be a good incentive for families to come out and hang out Friday. We'll have a DJ playing, of course, lots of vendors. We're hoping to work with the fire department for a fire toasting, for them to sponsor a toasting marshmallow for kids. So just having like free marshmallows for kids so that they can toast them out there and have the fire department hang out and that'd be fun. And then Saturday, we're gonna be doing it all day with our actual cook-off. We will be having three light bands. And they're all, all Texas country, a variety of them. It's gonna be Mike and the Moon pies, Cody West and then Doc Weathers. So it's gonna be lots of fun. We will also be having our foodie competition as well. And then we did receive watchers tax funding and one of their requests was that we made sure all of our vendors have CRS slash security numbers. And those forms have been updated and they do say that. So I required them to have that as well as food permits. And I also will be having a beer garden on Saturday and I do, I will be needing the city manager's signature on that. Hopefully you guys have no additional questions. I do have insurance as well for the entire event for the two days. And, well, technically three days. Just like Evelyn, we also requested the city not reopen it until Sunday. We also try to get lots of volunteers. We do work with the athletic department, particularly the football boys. They come out to help us pick up trash. GWC provides two giant roll-offs. Waste Management provides fifty poly carts. We, we try our very hardest to pick up all the trash, but you know, we do ask for patience as well because it gets pretty crazy.
I have one question. Just maybe it's typo or maybe I'm understanding you right. Because on the top line, it says the sixteenth through the eighteenth. Two lines down, it says June seventeenth and June nineteenth.
So the event is, oh.
Oh.
So.
See where I see?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's typo or?
No, it isn't typo. The top one says seventeen and nineteen.
Okay, so should I, my amendment was for the sixteenth and the eighteen?
Oh, yes.
Or my motion.
I do apologize.
That's fine.
I wrote that wrong in two different places, maybe.
Mayor, I'd like to make a correction to my motion. Okay, so that being June seventeenth through June nineteenth. Man. I'll second for that correction.
I have a couple of questions. I'm gonna correct this first to our chief, city manager. Walked us all over, went through it all. We're all good with it? Okay, as far as police presence?
Yes, sir.
Should it be there?
As well as.
Okay, and the other question is that I understand with stupid mind, the issue with the trash. We're not gonna, we're gonna do our best to everybody.
Yeah.
We'll have volunteers.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, what's the timeframe again? Till it'll end on every night? What time will it end at?
So Friday night, it'll end at ten PM and then Saturday night, it ends at midnight. And then we're asking for the street to be reopened Sunday at ten, so that gives us a few hours to do a final walkthrough and be able to pick up anything that's left over. But the event itself is just Friday evening and Saturday all day.
Okay.
Members, I want to make sure that we have presence there to be clean.
We will make sure.
I would like to commend you also, just as we did earlier. I, I know you worked really hard on this and I think the change, I, I saw basically, you know, there's a couple of businesses that I understand it completely encompasses their business and by changing it to close to the evening, I think you're gonna find that they're very open to that and they appreciate it very much. So I, I appreciate what you're going out and about, I mean, going above and beyond what you've done in the past. We're getting better every year and we're looking forward to having this event again this year. All right, we have a motion and second on the amended motion, uh, written. Thank you. That was our, uh, any further discussion or questions?
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Go.
Yes.
Mr. Gaines?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh fifty-six. Approving a proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions and issuing fireworks restrictions within the city limits, Lee County, New Mexico.
We have a motion and a second for this resolution. I know we're fixing to have a little bit of discussion, so. Okay, Mr. Moore, would you like to explain this a little bit?
It's in front.
Okay, I didn't know if there was any specific.
So if y'all will look in your notes, the folders that I gave you. Should be your. Never mind, took it out. It's your New Mexico State Fireworks ordinance from the State Fire Marshal's Office. Pretty much what it is, is the exact same ordinance that we had last year. That's it. Nothing has changed. It does say in two different places. One says we can ban the aerial shelves according to the state, non-permitted or ban fireworks or aerial shelf reloading tubes, which are artillery shelves. But in another part on the, in the same deal, it says artillery shells are permissible. Last year, we allowed for artillery shells below a certain grant on the explosives. I will say, last year we had twelve fires on Fourth of July alone. And two structural fires caused by fireworks that were not started from the mayor, the citizens who own the property. They're started by somebody else. So just keep that in mind when we decide what we want to ban or how we wanna ban.
The resolution that you are proposing though, has encompassed as much as it can to prohibit that, I mean, to prevent that, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
And, and like I said, the resolution is the exact same one from last year.
But it's gonna rain a quarter inch tomorrow.
We can't guarantee that. We're hoping right now.
Hey, I can guarantee it. The roof's off my house already, so I'm.
So, so here's, here's. It's not necessarily in the city limits that we have so much of the problems with the fires. But if you drive on any county road out here and you look at the fire load, you'll understand.
You can see a black spot.
Well, look at your double weeks. We had an extreme double, double this year. If the conditions.
The ban that needs, we did area almost, never failed. Because we don't get a lot of rain this time of year, but never have we banned anything except what's on the state ordinance. Because our, our ordinance follows the state. Where you can't sell that, get some of this. When you start banning everything else, that's gonna Texas them out, bring it back over here. So then you got the same problem. You have Texas, where it gets stolen unless you see them doing it again. So it's just, I'll wait to go any further. And one thing that he's posted here is display fireworks ban. I can sell commercial fireworks. I only sell five C fireworks. That's for individuals. A display priority is for commercial fireworks only. So y'all aren't gonna have a personal fireworks seller show this year? Well, then you can't ban it.
I didn't change anything on this proclamation that we did not have last year.
The proclamation declaring youth not display fireworks except for occasional events. That's banning the city's fireworks because it's commercial.
Aren't you saying that we changed anything from last year?
It was the exact same as last year's proclamation. Yes, I, I will do it while for the package.
Why argue with James every year? So that's a formidable deal. But I'm not the only one. David, when you have sales fireworks, there's a couple that aren't here because they're not local. But you're only gonna, the local people. Anybody else, they're gonna enjoy it because everybody goes Texas fire. When you can't buy here, all you can sell here, be banned everything, is a fountain. It's gonna cause more fireworks than any artillery that I sell for a five hundred grand nuts. Because they go way up in the air and burn it. A fountain is right here to the ground. Shooting out sparks. It's gonna get a grass fire. We're using it. You've got to be careful with what you use fireworks. And where do you use them? You can't. And that's how it really is.
Man, that's, and also on the city fireworks, we have fire trucks stationed right there the whole time. Citizens don't have that.
Yeah, you gotta.
So, oh, but like I said, it's not necessarily so much in the city limits that we're having these grass fires. It's more out in the county.
This ordinance is for the city.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Our.
We do have the same problem right there behind the old Bell's building where Berks is now, we, that seems like it burns up every year, Fourth of July, we're fighting that, the whole area. In pretty much any open pasture or field that we have in the city, over there around the high school, we seem to fight it every year as well.
I'd like to see all those records because I had to form three years in a row, this is the first time I've heard fireworks doing damage to properties. I personally asked for it, didn't ride, and never got them before, on how many fires were started by fireworks. And this is the first time.
That's something I can start with a record.
But yeah, a lot of times, I'm a free butcher. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for?
No, sir.
Anything from the commission?
The county said it been.
That's the problem, each entity has to set their own. This has to be done within twenty days. Right, I'm trying to get a start on that, because I want them to have more than just the twenty days, though, is of what we decide to do, that way they're not having to cancel stuff.
Yeah, they not order the wrong.
Exactly, they're not ordering stuff that they're unable to, it's, I'm not trying to say more convenient for them, but they know before they order. I just try to work with the community. Be as well as the people who, the vendors, the city. Did we rescind the ordinance, the earliest rate or timeline we have to be able to rescind?
So the only difference that we did make was that on this resolution, it reads that it's until the commission, oh wait, thirty days from this date, unless it's up, so, yeah. There was, there's, that was the only change, and last year, I'm trying to find it to read off that one real quick, that was the only change that.
Last year it was good within thirty, it was only good for the thirty days from when the commission's done, well, this year since I'm going way beyond that thirty days, that's the only change we made to that amendment. We put that it was at the discretion of the commission, of how, if they want to rescind the amendment.
Paul, you have a question here. Sorry, if, my question is, if people can go to Denver, C or Seminole, or whoever and buy the fireworks that you're banning here, and yet they bring them back here, is that causing us to lose revenue because we're not able to sell them here?
Yes and no, I mean, you, I, I know y'all are looking at it from money-making portion, looking at it from what it's gonna do to my department. Look at it like this. You have insurance for your building and the fireworks that you sell in your res, your business. Those fireworks you sell, there's no insurance for your neighbor or your neighbor's neighbor if somebody sets off that firework, yes, they may have homeowner's insurance, but there's a lot of people in the city who do not. I don't know how many of y'all, your business, what you get at Fourth of July, does it support your whole business for the whole year? So, I mean, that's something you have to look at. Like I said, I look at it at the fire aspect, I, I'm trying to work with y'all as best that I can. I can only, you know, do what the, the commission will allow, what they will allow us to do, but we also have to follow the state ordinance as well. So I can only, we can try to enforce, we get P D as well during Fourth of July, two weeks before the Fourth of July. We have people driving, we drive till like nine, eleven, or ten or eleven o'clock at night, even though they're only allowed to shoot till a certain time at night. We continue driving the area, driving this city to make sure people are trying, are obeying the, what we enforce. Just like P D, we are small, we do not have a big force to go out and enforce all this, and we can only enforce those that we see, and we're unfortunately not gonna be able to see everyone. I appreciate it. It is the responsibility of everyone that sits up here, excuse me, for the safety of citizens, and if, if at all, we can change it before the time period expires, we will endeavor to do that. But based on our current conditions, I don't think anybody, and I appreciate your input and I understand where you're at, but no one can say right now that we are not in an extremely high-risk fire situation, not only in what we have in our surrounding, but what we can impose on our neighbors depending on the wind, so. The council, oh, excuse me, the commission is going to vote, and understand that it is safety that each one of us has to be voting on. Yes.
You wanna ask again?
I have a question, so, so do you have the list of what can or cannot be sold?
We do, and like I said, it's gonna be the exact same as last year, we did not change that, it's the exact same as last year. What you ordered last year, what aerials you had, the same artillery shells that you had under the, remember exactly, one of six, twenty thousand grams? I can't unload off the top of my head. Five, five hundred grams. Let's say twenty thousand, that's a lot, yeah. So, that's, that's what we used in our show with the five thousand grams. I did not change anything to that proclamation, so anything that was okay last year and anything that you ordered that we did, you're good the same this year, I, we did not change any of that, and we're still going for the state ordinance, and the state ordinance has not changed.
My question is also that, if I put your order, order it now. My question would be, if it gets any worse, I guess you could say, because you know how the winds are, I mean, get it in connection. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, when you put the city money out and the city comes out, decides to say, you want, can't do it, all hundred percent, that becomes an issue to the buyer.
We have followed the state ordinance, I understand, so we can only go by what they do.
My thing is, like you're saying, you know, and I respect all the law and everything, is that I want to be compliant, but the fact is, you know, nobody wants their house. If you ever had a house fire like I have, you lost everything, that's where it's my very bad. That happened back in nineteen eighty-four, and I'm still suffering today. But you, there's dangers that you lose money, can't, okay, I'm twenty, can't regret. So I just would like to know, if the city could convince, say, you know, well, we can give it a line June twentieth, or maybe the fifteenth, or, you know, just, just try to say they, where the city could come in and say, you know, what, we can or we can't. And I'd be happy with that, you know, because, you know. But you said they depend on it for their life, I would just, I don't need a lot of stuff, what am I gonna make, I don't need a lot to the football kids and stuff like that, that's what I do to my actual, I don't get back to the kids. You know, so I, you know, just wanna be fair to the, to our city and to everybody that's making smart decisions. I just would like to, the city would consider giving me a death sentence by at least the fifteen, you know, fifteen days prior to the fourth of that, acceptable to the mission. And to you also, and I know your responsibility is great, it's a lot.
So all I can tell you, I can't speak for the commission, but unless the state changes, I will not change. Unless the state comes in and says we are banning this, or we have known at all, I will not change. Further question? All right. Check.
We should vote?
Yes.
We should why, yes, we should be?
Yes.
You're Robert.
Yes. All right. Mayor, I'll step out behind you a little bit. Okay. We have completed our time for this evening, we are going to be going into non-action items discussion, basically budgetary, I want to say I appreciate everyone coming, we understand your concerns. And again, we're gonna work to our very best with everyone on all of these issues, and we appreciate you at least coming and letting us know your concerns and hope we can do the help. So if you don't wanna say, I certainly understand that, I'm, we're gonna wait until Mr. Gandy comes back and then we'll enter into our budget presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I've asked each presenter to limit within ten minutes.
We didn't bring any meat.
I thought I could.
I'm sorry. So I'd say you didn't bring any meat.
Oh, okay. This labor tax, man. We'll take you to go home, sir.
Dr. Martinez, do you want to basically, I'm putting the T minus, I'm gonna go first, but you wanna just kind of basically introduce the department in order and then you can turn it over to them to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, what I've asked the directors to do is to give a general overview and to let the commission and staff know total cost for next fiscal year. And so we'll have Police Chief present first, and then we'll have Fire M S Department planning and zoning, and then we'll, we'll finish with the city.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, I'd like to first start off with changes to the department in the last six months. I apologize to Commissioners Bolt and Gandy, gentlemen have lived through this, this is more for the benefit of Mayor, Commissioner White and the City Manager who weren't here when some of these changes took place. But they greatly affected the department, so the biggest move we made was the absorption of L P N D dispatches of the Lee County Communication Authority in January. There was immediate cost savings for salaries and benefits of about a quarter million dollars, but if you factor in the overall cost savings of upgrades we're gonna have to make, things that were not in compliance equipment, it's over a half million dollars, so that's, that's a cost saving to the department. Other benefits we received were the donation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by Lee County for mobile data terminals in our units, and that was the Fire Department and the Police Department. Fire already has their, today, they have received eight, we're supposed to get twelve in two weeks. We also integrated CAD, stands for Computer Automated Dispatch, and R M S stands for Record Management System. We are now tied into the House Police Department, Lee County Sheriff's Office, again, this was entirely free except for an eight hundred dollar internet hookup per month to the Police Department, but it translates into a roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost savings to the department. And just like the M D Ts, this is something we've never been able to afford ourselves. We eliminated the K nine program at this point in time, reduced costs. Sheriff Haldeman, the Lee County Sheriff's Office donated four police dispatch units used to us, but they're still on the job today, three months later, thank God we got them because they're helping us at a critical time. We rebuilt the department, we filled the supervisor chain of command, we've hired sixty officers, four of them certified, and we greatly reduced turnover, which is something I'm very proud of. Lastly, at the direction of the City Manager, we moved code enforcement under the Police Department just last month, and I think we've been having some immediate success. So just a quick snapshot of our Police Department, we have slots for twenty-eight sworn officers, nineteen are currently filled, which is a sixty-seven percent staffing rate. Of, of those of the nineteen, one is currently in the police academy, one is going to the police academy, and one is full-time in the Lee County Job Task Force. We have a code enforcement officer and four civilian employees, which is administrative assistant to records clerks and evidence admission. So a single, single meaning not just one, but non-married, without children, police officer certified, costs the city seventy-two thousand a year. They take home forty-two thousand, but the rest translates into benefits and things like that, taxes. As we all know, our department's not able to pay as well as surrounding agencies, benefit packages also, not quite as attractive, everybody knows the county has a lot of money. So, a main concern is our vehicle fleet, especially the patrol vehicles. Our fleet years range from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen, we don't have a newer patrol unit than two thousand sixteen. I think we have one from two thousand eighteen, our average mileage on our units between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty thousand miles. Generally, with most departments, they retire them between eighty and a hundred thousand miles, and obviously, at that mileage, you're gonna have increased maintenance costs. Currently, a new patrol unit fully equipped costs sixty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand per unit, twenty-five thousand upgrade to light siren, gauge, graphics, radar, things like that. So this year, our immediate critical needs vehicles, we really need at least ten, I know that's a lot of money, it's an area that's been neglected for years. We're asking for five, we're not asking for any admin vehicles, these are all patrol, where it would impact the community the most. I'm also talking to outside sources for private funding, county funding, wherever we can get help. Also, our code enforcement officer who's driving around in two thousand seven, shedding a pickup with a hundred and thirty-one thousand miles, her front door doesn't work, she can't even close her front door at this point. And we got quoted three thousand dollars for a new door, which is probably what they use this one. So we're asking, this is twenty-two thousand dollars, that's just a little forward map. Our Police Department, of course, follow our ships, there's two day ships, two night ships, especially at night, we try to have three officers, officers on the ship. You know, daytime, weekends, detectives fill in, admin fills in, we all, you know, feel the need for officer safety to get those officers on the streets. But again, you have to factor in things like, it takes five months to send a cadet through the police academy, we have to send for advanced and, you know, buy-in and training, days off, sick days, vacation time. So what I'm asking for is to fit two patrol positions. If you look at the graph on the next page, and you can see historically, and I know times are different, but we're coming off three point eight million in nineteen and twenty. The only time the salary budget has been lower was fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and that's when we had the salary deductions in place. So this year's salary calls for two point six million dollars for the Police Department, and just some highlights of that. So the two point six million dollars, it anticipates to hiring, hiring two additional officers, hopefully certified, which start off at a slightly higher rate, but it not be after sending them through the police academy. So all associated costs for that, it anticipates the purchase of five new patrol units and a new code enforcement vehicle. There is a one time, not one time, but it's once every seven years, that agreement which the commission. an agreement which the commission in 2016 signed with LCCA, our portion of this is $99,000 for a radio system upgrade. Fire is also charged with $99,000. It's based upon call lines to the county. If anybody wants a breakdown, obviously Hobbs and the county pay a lot more than that. I can give you that breakdown of the total cost. For instance, City of Hobbs is going to have to pay $431,000 to save in Lee County. So that is a once every seven-year charge. The budget also benefits from the fact that you're saving about $300,000 with the dispatch merger. And we get some additional free things from Lee County that I previously discussed. And the following is just the breakdown of the budget by the county. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Bo, I'm sorry. Budget highlights includes a once every seven-year payment for radio network upgrades of $99,000.
Yes, sir.
Seeing that that was in 2016.
Yes, sir.
Have we happened to put any way every year to work up little by little? Or is this going to $99,000 in us all once?
It's actually to the city. It's $198,414.77 years, and we did not squirrel away any money in anticipation. No, sir. And I didn't even know this existed until LCCA. Now, I'm going to, this is the breakdown there. And I'll even note that this doesn't include getting radios. This is just for the tower network in Lee County, so I can go to JAL and we can still receive calls and we can get on the county's channel and HDP's channel. So it's a lot of money. I'm shocked. It's once every seven years. Unfortunately, this is the seventh year.
The other, the other 99, I'm assuming is for the fire department?
It's in shoes.
I know we haven't gotten there, but I'm assuming that's where it's going to be in the next.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chief, the $2.6 million, that's your proposal for next fiscal year? That includes two new officers and five new vehicles and one quote. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does that include? That's everything. Okay.
Yes, sir. The reason we're going to do that is because of the dispatch savings. It's a slight increase from last year, which was under reduced hours a lot of it. But the reason why it's not closer to 2.8 or 9 is because of the dispatch savings. And that number, the 2.6, also includes that once every seven year $99,000. Every install in that number.
Sorry.
Do you have a separate, a separate only video? Breakdown?
No, I don't have one.
So we can see that. We don't know how much we're getting?
Well, it's not guaranteed, so.
So if you're going to do some things eligible expenses you can take out of this, put in there once we get it.
Yes, I've applied for approximately $60,000 in what's called the law enforcement protection fund from the state of New Mexico. If we do get it, and you'll see later when we do the account expense report review, it can pay for things like body cameras, tasers, and things like that. We actually have a $12,000 charge this month because we had to get all the tasers for about $80,000. This year's $12,000. We're using those funds. We did not put it in here until we were sure we were going to get it from the state.
Is that underneath professional services?
No, sir. It's not applied to none of this budget. So potentially, we might get a credit of $60,000, which we pay for. And they're very specific about what these safety equipment, safety equipment, body cameras, tasers.
Do you, have you been able to analyze last year? Because we run into this situation. Last year, the city over budgeted, well, it's what we were, and obviously, part of the police, the public, right, excuse me, public safety was in that over budget. Have you been able to compare your expenditures from last year to your budgetary, to the budgetary amount? Because if it was inflated, are we working off of what you spent? And then we're adjusting this year to that? Or is it just based on a budget from last year that we're adjusting?
We were kind of instructed not to go off last year's numbers because they were kind of unreliable.
Awesome, okay.
So I went off, you know, what, I actually calculated what each officer makes, what they pay. I will say that the numbers were inflated and lost a lot of officers. So, and then, and then, so we're working under budget. My department now is still under budget this year. But that is because we have less officers, no dispatch. So it allows us to maybe ask for a few things, like five new units or things like that. And then from that, but at the same time, we are running lean in terms of employment.
I understand. And what I'm asking, and you definitely addressed it, is are we working off real numbers? And that's what we need to work with the project. As you know, we're all desperately trying to come up with a budget that we don't have to go back and cut or anything like that. And we appreciate you taking the lead.
Yeah, no, I went off the current costs, anticipated costs. You know, obviously, we were allowed to hire two officers. We wouldn't go out and hire five. You know, these things, occasional end lines that you don't include out like this thing.
We keep finding them every day.
But I think it's a realistic budget, and I'm the type of guy who check it like hit monthly to make sure I'm conforming with the parameters of my budget. Not getting way off the course. Thank you.
So you said 19 are full, and right now we have?
19, we'll be going to 21. We'd still be down seven. But at least it would be manageable where we have two detectives, we wouldn't have a third. We have an administrative staff. We still don't have an administrative lieutenant. We'd be down seven patrol officers, but, you know, we've got a plan for that person who leaves to go to the sheriff's office or to Hodger, the oil field. And it's just to get someone in the pipeline, it takes almost a year to train and certify. And because we can't pay as much, we've been lucky. We got some certified officers. But in general, historically, we've got to take the uncertified, probably local guy, three months in the field training officer program, five months in the academy, and then we get a certified officer ready to go on the streets by himself.
Even so, that would still be down seven?
Yes, sir. We'd probably be at 73 or 4% staffing. But to be fair, most law enforcement agencies, except the sheriff's office, are down between a quarter and a third statewide. Right there. Just, do they want to be contract?
Do you have a contract after we put him through a less school for all of them?
That's a very good question. So we have revised and implemented our three-year contract. Obviously, it doesn't apply to certified officers, but if they can net hook you off the streets, going through the police academy, hold them to a three-year contract, which the city manager sat in a thought. And we will go after them and garnish their wages if they leave. And we have a sliding scale when they, you know, even that last month, it was 500 bucks. Yeah, we'll go after them.
Going back to your question, year-to-date, well, actually, this is not year-to-date. This would be April. So nine months ended, the fire department, if all of these expenses are accurate, is 2.2. I mean, the police department is 2.2, sorry. And so that's something that we'll have to do when we get all these numbers. We'll, I mean, we'll obviously look at that, but I didn't want to give it to the managers as a crutch. And so, as you can see, he's, if we analyze the 2.2. Is that 2.2?
2.9 is where you end up.
Yeah.
Plus a little change.
So yeah, 2.887, and so less than $200,000 are different. But like I said, if that's accurate information based on year-to-date, then.
So in working with the city manager, financial director, running out, the reason I'm stating that having real numbers, we're doing our best, I mean, based on revenues and all that, to assess where we're at so that we can then address some of these issues that are definitely issues and some of them become critical on all of our departments. And that's what we, we appreciate it because in my days and some of our days, it's all new. And so, you know, I can't take what you need. I can't even address, so your information is all we have to go off.
Yes, sir. And the only historical numbers I took when you do the graph, just to make comparison. I would be years to see what that.
Any other questions? If there are no. Anyway, if anybody disagrees or a gentleman in the audience would like to question on this.
Chief, I just, I know that you wanted the two officers and your overtime was $196,000. Those two officers, did you do that comparison to see if the gentleman would elevate to $196,000 overtime? Were that, you're kind of, you're pad with those special events and.
It's hard to say.
In these circumstances, because I don't know if she's turning your man, you know, based on time of parts and all of that stuff. If that kind of helped you out, because, you know, it could possibly save you in overtime, which is good, you know, if you have two officers. Because it also helps with, you know, burnout rates and more, you know, relief for your officers day-to-day at operations.
As a general rule, the more officers you get, the less overtime you need.
Didn't know that was the person that you got.
But you're saying there's the overtime, but you're increasing your other costs, right? Salary, parrot.
And you push it to $2,000 roughly.
But it's great in the benefits department in terms of fatigue and all that stuff. And you have more officers on the street for public safety.
Police and fire, you always have to have overtime.
Yeah, no, it's.
It's unforeseen things.
Yes.
This weekend was getting out.
I've been with the department 12 years. I think we were fully staffed, no matter what that number was, all of about two or three months. I probably would have yet.
And if we get fire, like, we can go to their account, you're going to have to have everybody on the streets directing. You just have to have that many.
All hands on deck.
You have to.
Any other questions or take more in?
We're going to be putting wellness and HR. What was the 12,000 professional services? We've got the hiring.
We appreciate it.
Pre-employment.
Yes, special services, American Medical Group, polygraphs, running background checks, road screens, sighting ballots, things like that. It's pre-employment screen, police officers, it's 60 minutes.
And how about the thousand other contractual?
I think those are small contracts, or small, it's not SWAT, but it's. So it's minimal.
And then the other one, pretty pushing advertising, before we're going to put that in, was?
With the city. That's when we started advertising for officers on indeed.com this year. That is why we had that, but it was something called 200 bucks or something. But if you want to put that into the city, we have to take that in our budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I would recommend that we go on to our chief so we can stay within the timeframe.
So just a quick overview. Everybody has these printouts of my budget. There's four of them. They're put together. So this, you got to take into account. So a total of $3,680,95, that's what I'm budgeting for. So our salary between EMS and fire is $1,279,000. And overtime, we pay out 200, about 235,000 just in overtime alone. So FICA, we're paying out around $94,000. Para is $214,000. And I went a little extra on that because everybody has this printout as well. Our para is going up this year, starting in July. So we already pay 19.2, this is the individual. Now we're fixing to be paying 19.7, 19.7 instead of already goes to our. Okay, and then insurance, healthcare, we're at $264,000. Workman's comp, about $34,000. The DFA payment for the ladder truck, $117,000 a year. However, well, I'll get to that part in a second. And then the Health CCA, radio tower upgrades, of course, right at 100,000, which is less than 100,000. So that was $2337,000 of that $3.68 million. So our income, all we get yearly for ambulance billing is $848,946.69, so to say, $849,000. The ambulance grant this coming year, we're getting just over $42,000. And state fire income, which is the state fire grant, $288,245. The ladder truck, $67,000 of that for the ladder truck of 117 comes out of that state fire fund. The other 50,000 comes from the county fire protection. So we get the county, or the city gets $250,000 from the county. It goes, of course, towards senior citizen center, youth center, library. Some of it comes through the fire department for fire protection in the county. When we purchased our ladder truck, I added another 50,000 to that, so they hit 300,000. 50,000, that's supposed to be allotted to that payment of that ladder truck. So that 117,000 comes out of the state fire fund and that 50,000 from the county. So if you look at the EMS budget, just the EMS budget alone is $1453,000. And it's got what we, what our budget was last year, the encumbrance that we still have out, where we're estimated to be at the end of 2022, where the numbers are going to fall whether we're under, over, and you can see we're pretty much all over budget. So there's also a breakdown in here. We did put for two new ambulances. So our newest ambulance has 100,000 miles. That one, newest ambulance. Our oldest ambulances, some of them have 200-plus thousand miles on it. Granted, we run a lot of transfers, a lot of transports. And on that 1.4 billion, two of that was for ambulances at $300,000 a piece, which is $600,000. Senator Heinrich's office, they had a grant where you could put in. They said they would be able to give us 15% of that $600,000, which should be roughly $90,000. So we still have about $510,000 for those ambulances. Is that, how secure is that agreement? But I'm still waiting on the email or phone call from Senator Heinrich's office that says, we are giving you this money. But when I talked to them last week, she said, we can give you off 15%. Which they, that falls on what our average household budget in our county makes, plus this is part of our city, plus the size of our city. They put all that into account, and they said, well, we can give you 15%. We can give you the full 75% that some of these other counties or cities are getting. They put all that into account. And they said, well, we can give you 15%. We can't give you the full 75% that some of these other counties or cities are getting. They said it's plus 15%. So that's not, 15% is what she said they they can get.
And can we buy a whole ambulance every month?
Yes.
Can you do those where you just buy.
You can do the remounts.
Is that more feasible, like, in the future?
So with what Senator Heinrich's office, their requirements were full ambulance. Chassis, box, everything. However, we buy the Hortons. So if we can get a new chassis, we could remount those boxes. Some of them, I don't know that I can rebound. But we could rebound, yes.
I know people are heavier, they take, they really.
Yes, yes. Just go with that.
Yes, Scotty, it's from taking you.
How many ambulance did we get? We had five. And the same as Chief Miranda, we spend so much on maintenance.
And you kind of count two always being on to let.
You can almost count, one always been in the shop. And one to two being on the road almost 24/7. So we're supporting our city usually on about two accidents that we can save. And as a gap, we have to send one out to the table. So in that salary, that is budgeting for the six employees that we are short. Where we normally are fully staffed would be seven personnel per ship. We run three ships. They were 48 hour periods. And we cover over 2,000 square miles of fire and EMS, because we cover table as well. We're doing that with five personnel, the same, like I said, as PD are, we get burnout. We're putting in so much overtime. If we send out one transfer, that's two people automatically, we automatically have to call in an on-call because we have a minimum staffing for personnel for shift. That doesn't include if you have people on vacation, if you have people sick. Anything that happens in class, exactly if we have people, we've got three firefighters who we need to get through a fire academy, which we are doing that in-house. We're gonna start that in June. That's all gonna be staffed or ran out of station two. We have two people that need to go through a basic class, which is supposed to start mid, let's see, mid, oh, no, I'm sorry. They're gonna start in January of next year of '24, but it's still in this budget year.
And that's the EMS.
That's EMS basic. Mid-July, we have an intermediate class starting, which we have one person going through that. So anytime those people are on shift and they have to go to class, we have to have the personnel make up for that. That's why I'm asking for the six personnel that got cut during COVID. When COVID hit, we lost. And if you look at the overtime rate compared to what we would pay for the six officers, it's, it's gonna equal itself out. Granted, you're never gonna totally get away with overtime. That's one of those that's gonna happen. So when you take all those numbers that I gave you, like I said, the salary, the overtime, your paramedic, your parent, your insurance, workman's comp, the one-time L D C A. When you take all those plus what we make, we are kind of running this both department, fire and EMS about 113,800 a year. So that's, like, not counting your salary and all that, but that's counting your all your work that hasn't been done, you know, all your maintenance on your trucks, your maintenance in your station, anything, your utilities, that kind of stuff, all that. Bill, bill on EMS alone is like 60,000. Just on having.
Did you escalate that based on first fight?
Yes, sir.
Because you're all diesel, right?
Well, except for three command units that are gasoline. However, our fire trucks, our pumps on the fire trucks are gasoline. On our grass rigs, we have three grass rigs, those pumps are gasoline. Everything else is all diesel. And John knows well as I do, the middle of the whole field, diesel is even more than gasoline.
So, so since we're on that subject, because I was really shocked that John ain't run that much diesel.
That we do or we don't?
I mean, my last diesel bill last month, $60,000. So, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure, because that's about, that's about 220, 230 gallons of.
This is what I've got. It is.
And that's based off 5, 550 gallon diesel. So, so I just wanted to make sure.
Last year, we budgeted for just shy of $44,000. We're estimated to spend, this was before the increase, 45,000 dollars. So we is gonna be just over $1,000 over. However, with the increase, not only that, I have to take into consideration all of our transfers have started to increase. I mean, like I said, this month to know, we took, what, 49 long distance transfers? So the more of those increase, the reason we're increasing is because hospitals are opening up. We don't have as much COVID restrictions as we were. Hospitals are taking more patients. We're not flying as many as we were then, because before we just had to fly to Dallas, Denver, Arizona, anywhere that they want the hospital to take. Love, you know, that's our accommodating now. So we're running back and forth all the time to go. And so I have to take into consideration not only the car price of fuel going up, but also the fact that we're taking more. Chief, you're certain.
Your total budget again, total?
Total for both fire and EMS was $3,680,95.
3.6?
3.6.
And that budget includes six new employees?
Yes, sir.
The two ambulances?
Yes.
And that, that doesn't include revenues come, the revenues that are coming in will pay part of that.
Revenues that we're coming in is 1.229 million.
Okay.
So off of that 3.68, 1.229 is revenues that we're getting in.
And if you have your six people, that ups your chances for our ISO rating.
That ups the chance for ISO to go down, which means we would get more income for each station. And of course, insurance rates on everything would go down as well. And it would hopefully be able to.
And you have the additional employees under the fire.
I've got, there is, with the chief, chief being gone, we're six personnel short on fire and one personnel short in EMS. The EMS specialty. But that one in EMS is budgeted in with that. And like I said, I've got, the way we work, we have our EMS budget, our general EMS budget, and then we have our EMS grant fund money. Then we have our general fire fund, which all of our salaries and stuff come out of. And then we have our fire grant fund, which is the state fire grant money. That is not always exactly the same. It depends on how the state's doing, insurance sells that kind of stuff. But going off of last year's numbers, and if everything stays the way it is, we should get that 288,245, which comes up to just over 94,000 dollars per station and plus the administration office. And if the ISO goes down, that will go up as well.
Do you have a paramedic for each shift?
I have two paramedics right now that are on shift. That is all we have.
You don't have enough for each shift?
No.
And how many IV techs do you have?
We've got, right now on shift, we've got 16 people, two intermediate, I'm sorry, two medic, two nothing, one basic, everybody else is going to be IV tech.
So you're covered good.
So we are covered good as far as being able to push drugs, start IVs, that kind of stuff. Because your basic, they can't do one, of course, intermediate. And then your medic can push more drugs than your intermediate. And they can do stuff like darting your chest to the field, that I would agree with that, too. They can intubate, whereas an intermediate, we can do a, an airway edge up, a king, a compu tube, whatever. We can do it, but they can actually do intubation. So there are stuff that medics can do that intermediate's can't.
Some point, if we can get two medics for each shift.
So what I'm looking at is this coming August, I believe it is, there is a, a medic class coming on. I have three individuals who would like to go through that medic class. And the workforce helps pay for that. I would like to send those three through that. However, when we do that, that's 18 months of them being in class. Five days a week, plus being in clinicals out of town. So at that point, while they're gone, of course, it puts more stress on the shift personnel that are working. And overtime, because we're having coffee.
But when you hit the floor, that doesn't matter. You want to know that that person's community safety.
Yes, yes. On board, the more we can make our department better, the better service we can get to the community as far as fire and EMS.
Did you include that training?
Yes, because the workforce pays for most of that, the rest of it.
So that's 7,400.
Yes, sir.
Did you have good contracts on them?
Yes, we do. What we do with a medic is they sign, I believe, a three-year contract that says they will, after they get their medic, they have to work three years.
I think five, we need three on IV tech.
With the, so the way that I have IV techs is they need to sign a one-year contract, because that's basically, it doesn't cost us near as much for an IV tech as it does for a medic. And they always have the choice that they can buy out their contract. And the problem we're having is Ops, Crossbad, a lot of these agencies, if they go over there, they'll say, hey, we'll buy off your contract. We'll buy out. That's nothing for us. We don't want to do that. And the problem is, we can't keep out of the rate. These other big cities.
But also, you have to look at the amount of runs per day. You're really making.
So if you take the numbers from our station, station one, compared to Hop Station one, we take more calls than Hop Station one. Steven, with less.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, if there's any other questions for the bar chief concerning the budget, then we can move on to planning. If there's any other question. Because from my understanding, Mr. Corry, he told me that for ambulances, he had like 200,000 dollars that he was looking to get towards purchase of an ambulance.
So I have no idea where that. The only thing I've got is the 90, well, let me rephrase that. That's what he thought we were probably going to get from Senator Heinrich. Until they called and said, oh, you're not gonna get this much money. We can only give you this percentage. Which, which came out. I guarantee you, that's where that 200,000 comes from Senator Heinrich's office. That 15% was memorated in the quote from Senator Heinrich. They called me and told me directly, we will only be able to give you the 15% when we come up.
Okay, so I know I budgeted, the dark blue line at the very last is this year's request. You can see the 2019 and 2021 budget. I didn't have time to get with Ms. Shannon to go over the increase on para and to verify that my wellness and workers comp and all that were correct. But, because I've been out in training, and I was told that I have to come present now. So I will verify those with her. We did add, the city manager asked me to add the special projects, the match money that we have to have funded for those. He wanted me to put those in my budget. Which greatly increased my budget, like, almost tripled my budget. So I do need to, I did budget for a vehicle, put in 50,000. I drive a 2006. It's an old code enforcement truck. I do not drive it home at night because the headlights don't work. We have tried and tried to fix it. It is a short in the whole harness wiring of the system. Not messing with it. I just don't drive it home at night. It is, has 98,000 miles on it. It is getting up there in mileage. So, and yeah, it's, I had a call from Lieutenant Jackson today asking me to let the code officer have my truck. That's the only truck I have available to me to do my inspections and go out and my field investigations that I have to do. Did you have any specific questions? I know I went up in my training, which was to try to get my commissioners, and you guys could take advantage of that, to try to pay to take you to a zoning, it's planning and zoning conference, where they do a specialty commissioner training, teaches you rules and regulations. Some of my planning and zoning commissioners have went several other times. They didn't go this, the last time, because, of course, it got canceled because COVID. But they did go over four years ago. It really helped them learn a lot about how to proceed properly. You know, they were granting variances left and right, and made them understand the importance of not granting them some left and right. Yeah, so it really helped. Did you have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Ms. Paul, can you explain on the projects, like the 1.7, how were, how much money we having capital outlay, the T P F project, Jackson Street and so forth?
Okay, so on the main street, the 1.7 is the actual amount we owe right now to N M D O T. Well, of course, we're not being built yet. We won't start being built until after it's done. We know that's going to change, just like I said in commission, we have the Rock X that's going to be added to it. We have more valves, more caps and cuts that are having to be done for unknowns. I know we have the capital outlay of 807. We had another capital outlay of 430 something. So we have that much money for capital outlay that we can start adding, that we'll be able to apply to that, that we're supposed to pay off. On the T P F, of course, we do not know if we got those or not. I just wanted to be able to put our match in there if we did get any of those. So that could, you know, if we don't get all of those grants, that would go down, of course. Then the same thing with the Matt Grant, the Jackson Street project, that is the amount we do have to pay on that one. The Jackson Street project did just finish up, so that will be coming. That actually will probably not be in next year budget. It's gonna be something I'm gonna have to pay before the end of this, this.
Crystal, do you know what the T I F is?
T V S?
T P F. No, T I F. Where is T I F?
It's not anywhere on there.
Okay, I'm like.
Yeah, we have a fund called T I F downtown. It's the tax, it's related to the property tax. I mean, it's, it's supposed to be designated for, I'm not sure what, some special, yeah. Going to do with the. Yeah, county, no. What that's for.
And did, did you get, you're having available 26, so you didn't get any little grants or anything for. And did, did you get, you're having available twenty-six thousand, you didn't get any little grants or anything for? I mean, that's our part, babe.
That's our part, is the.
I think you were saying you're going to find money somewhere on that one.
Or, no, not on the Jackson, no, the, on the Main Street, when that's where we had looked to try to get more capital outlay money there.
We have a fund, discussing with the mayor earlier, it's three ninety-nine capital budget. Or I'm going to be moving those. I needed the numbers from you, Crystal. But I'm going to be moving those in there because we need to do the income and the expenses out of the fund. So we don't run into the problem we ran into since I've been here, which is the money.
Yeah, well, these have never been in mine. He just asked me to.
Right, well, we, we needed you to come up with the numbers.
Okay.
So for the, for the benefit of the, you know, commission, her fund will look more, her, her fund in, in general fund will look more like the one where she's backed those numbers out. The other ones will go into this three ninety-nine capital budget. And it'll show the income in the form of the capital outlay monies minus the expenses. And this will be a really fluid fund, meaning I, I will be creating accounts every time we have a new project and name it specifically for that, so we can keep the accounting straight. Because when I first got here, we didn't know where to find money. It was mixed in, and that's a big problem. When it goes into general fund, it gets used. So we end up, twenty months, time to pay the bill. We don't have the money. So we are going to make a better process for separating these projects out.
We can, we just need to. We can ask them to, we have absolutely, sorry. And thank you, because that's what we've been dealing with, is trying to figure out what our allocations are and our revenue streams. It's been difficult.
So is that three ninety-nine, is it just going to be for fighting the zoning, or is it going to be for other?
No, it'll be other things. We were talking today about, you know, what we might have to pull out. For example, that county money, we did contact them. They budgeted for three hundred for this year for us. They said that they weren't sure that there was a specific allocation. Now, I may get with Jaleen and find out if we have some sort of a organizational resolution that specified within our organization where the money is meant. So I do need some guidance on that. And, you know, wherever we can, if we need to, we could pull the money out of ambulance and put into COVID for the ambulances and those sort of things. So, but from the department heads for this stage of the process, we just feel to include it in theirs and we'll move it as we, so that's kind of what I talked about with Crystal's stuff, we'll do it for if needed, we'll do fire, EMS, people can believe, all these different expenses where we can move on to, to alleviate some pressure off general fund, for example, and to utilize those monies where they're eligible.
So you will have them in the three ninety-nine, and you're going to be separating different projects as you will.
Yes, possibly. But like I said, it just depends. That's all going to be a discussion item, and, you know, that's why I was kind of wanting guidance for last Monday, was what to do with these sort of expenses, including debt. Are the debts going to be coming out? They, they, it's been a mess. Some of the debts have been paid out of the current funds, some of them haven't. And this is all things that ends in having to go back and correct for where these allocations were made or not made. But going forward, we need to have a definitive, where does this debt need to come out of?
So it's not under the library boot fund?
Yes.
We just got to be for a fire.
We are. Can I create a capitalization?
One of the main things is only the. Where it's going.
And we want to, that takes the burden by. Those are going to be quickly moved into the capitalization, so it's really not an operational expense. It's an, it's an external, and then when we do an asset management plan, then we can have everything lined out for these minutes or this. And they've been depreciating to this point, just a lot of things. But we have to get the numbers to know where we need to get.
And we may not be able to show all the revenues from that fund until we've kind of gotten a couple of months into this deal to see, as we're talking before, about putting monies away into that fund for capital projects, so we can start to build the reserve. That's been a major priority for Dr. Martinez. And so we'll kind of use that as a reserve fund, but we've got to figure out where we can start funding the reserve fund. So we don't know yet what our extra monies are, especially till we get through this process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, any other questions for Chris?
Okay, we have one, one more with Shannon, is that over here?
Long Shannon.
Okay, there's no objection, our gentleman locked another. Please bring your brief.
Oh, Scott, a piece of advice for that, if you want to see what they're talking about, how they break it up organizationally, ask mine, Mr. Ferris, ask him to show you like a budget from two, three years ago of how they do it, and you'll see a template of how it's broken down. And he may be able to tell you the accounting terms for it, because, you know, it is accounting, of course. But you'll see what they're trying to move this structure to, and you'll see there is each department has two tabs, capital expense. So each one of them has specific, I mean, GL code to find for each one of those things. And you'll see how it's broken down in there. So they're trying to move to that format. So if you want to see it on paper and kind of how it would visualize it, because some are talking about it, it's one thing, but that, see it on paper, you'll clear a lot of your questions, and you'll have a more focused question when you have an issue with owing and acquired fundings here, not there. So they're asking to show you like an old one. It'll, it'll figure it out.
Thanks, all right.
I made a mistake with Commissioner's salary.
Uh-oh, well, then we didn't.
So I'm going to have to, yeah. Those salaries in the front, I think they're, they're about twenty thousand. Your salaries are on my budget. So y'all got a raise back last year. For now, all the commissioners are at the new
Great.
rate that y'all approved about four years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
So really, there's not like a lot to this. I did put a little in there for travel, again, if that was y'all's budget, travel budget would come out of this. Fuel. Move for training, that could be, I don't know, y'all be going to anything, y'all might be going to something. Advertising, advertising is pretty high, just because of all the ordinances, everything we have to advertise. No elections this time. Fees, we have to take that out of county fees.
What are the county fees?
Recording fees. And we're here, it's for the cemetery fee or resolution that Crystal might have, that would have to be recorded before that. Just with the way these fees. Now, there's other contractual services. I looked at that because the professional service agreements were, were in that. And on that second page, I broke out those professional service contracts and where they will be charged. And really, only about thirty-five thousand is charged to legislate.
Yeah.
Martyrs' tax has to that, or CDC comes out of their fund. And museum is just coming out of. So that just shows kind of how they've been broken down. So I don't know.
Yeah, so again, I'll need some guidance on, well, for one, one thing, we renegotiate those in July every year. So.
Fourth.
Oh, yeah, so soon, but we'll need the numbers prior to June first, so we can do it for this, but. And then, yes, where do they come from? That's another one of those allocation questions.
Is the contract with the hospital, does it also determine Kennedy, I'm sorry? Does this fall under third department, how does it?
We, so we pay part of the wellness for the, basically the gym memberships. That's as previous, coming out of every department. We've rolled that into an HR department that I created. And I've created a second line item for that wellness contract. So it's going to come out of HR as well. All of this lays insurances, for example, air care, those sort of things, life insurance policies, I'm pulling out of there so that it's not, it's going to be set aside, and we don't have to have a line item in each department for those expenses. In the past, it's been done that way, but it's too complicated to break it up nine hundred times, so.
I wonder about health insurance.
Health insurance is, is a employee expense, so it does have to stay within the department. Because one department has three employees versus twenty employees in another department. So there's no simple way to do that. But like for patients and wellness, it varies, you know. We'll have some departments that don't have that expense, but you have some that, that do. But, you know, we pay one payment for that, so I think if, for paper reasons and efficiencies, we take it out of one department, one fund and one account. I mean, it's still all coming from the same place, so.
I would say I work with the hospital as far as people. If people are not utilizing it, are we still paying them?
I just ask the managers to poll their employees during this process and just kind of stress to them, you know, find out who seriously uses it and who doesn't.
Because I know, so our place to work, if we don't use it twelve times a month.
Right.
They don't pay it.
And I have a count of them that I've received from each department head, when they, when they hold their employees. And I'll compare that to who we're actually paying for. But, I mean.
So you, we're talking the ninety-seven hundred, ninety-five hundred, or whatever, we pay ten thousand dollars a month to the.
No, no, there's two separate deals.
Two separate deals there.
We are paying, we're paying half of our employees' membership dues.
Okay, and then you got.
And then you have the agreement.
Agreement, okay, all right.
So they're, they're going to be broke out to two different line items in one department.
So if I'm not, the way that was set up was that was reduction in insurance. Be wrong, the, the more people we had on, the better insurance rate we got, so.
I asked about that when we did our insurance meeting, and they said that it's not really, they don't, we don't get a discount for it, but it's reflected in our uses of our insurance. So that's just kind of an insurance way of saying, maybe people help you receive, yeah. So.
If they're not going, we don't need to be paying them for them.
But.
But I understand that, but you said, if it's reflected on our insurance.
If it looks like it.
Insurance is less.
Yeah.
And we have to pay which one.
If the biggest cost.
And our insurance didn't go up this year, either for ourselves or for the city or for the employees. They maintained it at the same rate, and the big reason for that was we actually got that big performance funding back for not utilizing our, our insurance, so. But they said that was a anomaly, and they'd never seen it before.
Everybody was sold, everybody was working at the right.
Nobody was doing.
You couldn't get into Norley unless you had COVID.
So that probably, that probably isn't going to happen, so I don't think we can expect no insurance increase next year. But yes, this, this wellness thing is just a benefit, it's an employee benefit. And we're not really being big learns about it, and so that would be all publicly up to y'all.
We're just thinking, I guess, that's saving us on the insurance. We need to find out which way we're saving the most. And if they're not using it a number of times, if it's beneficial in our way that way, then we need to make a certain amount of numbers, how many days a month, and if not, do it for the people.
Any other questions for Shannon? It is not. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, that's all for tonight. We had four. I want to thank Ms. Paul, Police Chief, Bar Chief, Shannon for the presentations. If we look at the remaining departments, we have three categories. So we have our administrative categories here. Then we have our public works category, which would be parks or recreation, sewer plant, and a water department. And then we have motor vehicle department, the library, whatever the other ones I've just seen, theater, senior center, and animal control. So total thirteen departments.
And you will be finishing those, some more tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And then. And then a budget hearing Monday.
Yeah, Monday night, we should have, I understand, we'll have everything that we need to be evaluating, have some finalization on that, so that the following Monday, it will, it will be finalized for adoption.
Correct.
So when are we going to get the figures on what we have to work with? I understand we can get all the departments, but we need to have numbers that.
Correct.
We're going to go by.
The, the discussion we had earlier with myself, the mayor, and Ms. Kennedy, what's the total amount of our budget? We need to know the total now. Is it fifteen thousand, I mean, fifty, fifty million, is it twenty-one? Let's just say, for example, it's fifteen, so just hypothetically speaking, if it's fifteen, okay, now we have to take out debt services, there's certain amounts of money, there's money that we need to take out. We need to find out total operational budget for thirteen. So again, if it's fifteen, take everything out. If it's operational at twelve, we have to fit thirteen operational budgets within that twelve million dollars.
We'll have the figures in the end.
Monday after this.
Okay.
Look from the file.
We have to have the numbers.
Yeah.
The budget is due to the state at the end of.
Yeah, we have to.
Yes, next Monday at the budget workshop meeting, we'll have some high-level numbers. We're just going to spend the following week to tweak those numbers to get the final approval and bring you after that. And that will provide you with six days to do the input.
Okay, is there anything we can expect basically not? I mean, I realize we're going to be, that following week after Monday, you're going to be working on cutting, cutting, reducing, you're going to do a lot of tweaking, but are we going to, can we expect everything next Monday night? With the exception of, if you have those items, you might just kind of let us know, or, or at least the beginning of the meeting, if you'll just say, this is what, you know, we don't have. So we've got to know where we stand that night.
Yeah, I don't anticipate it changing by more than two million one way or another. And I say that not saying revenues and expenses won't track together, they will, by two million plus or minus, between the time that you see the workshop numbers until the final. I'll ask for, say, a two million dollar leeway. And that's probably more than I need, but.
Any other questions, discussions, commissioners, staff? If not, we have exhausted the agenda items. We are.